Call out other members as they arrive.
Sure, and it looks like we're recording, so I will go as I see on the screen. Ms. Wells?
Here, sorry.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Mancini? Mr. Johnson?
Here.
And Mr. Showman?
Here.
So you have five.
Okay. The, we do not have any public hearings this evening, so there will not be any opportunity for public input. It'll simply be presentations by those or representatives of those on the agenda. First item is oh four dash twenty S P. Building Management seventy-five Van Buren Avenue. This is the Jefferson School request for modification of approved plans. We have someone here representing Jefferson.
Yeah, my name is Michael Fianza, and I'm the project manager that's representing the project with Construction Solutions Group. And subsequent to our application back in July for approval of the site plan for Jefferson, we distributed the plans throughout the city to the local jurisdictions and Parks and Recreation for their approval, and we got some comments back from them in regards to the landscaping. And they asked for us to provide larger trees in lieu of some of the smaller shrubbery and planting beds that we had on the property. So the revision to the site plan includes larger trees, which have replaced some of the smaller planting beds, which we feel will provide a more durable landscape for the school and be easier to be easier to maintain in the future.
Mr. Fanza was the main reason for the change. The inability or the cost to the Board of Education to maintain the plantings as they were originally presented.
The plantings are maintained by the Parks and Rec Department. And as a result, we just felt that it would be easier, you know, their crews have larger mowers, and it would have been, it would be easier for them to mow around and maintain larger trees than smaller planting beds that have mulch that would require, you know, frequent weeding.
Can you show us the difference between what was proposed and what is now being proposed?
Just give me, give me one second to get those plans up. Bear with me, I'm having a little bit of difficulty finding the original plan.
Okay. Good evening, Richard. For the record.
Sorry I'm late.
That's okay. Commissioner Rowena has joined the meeting.
I put them up, but I just don't have access to them readily myself.
Yeah, I'm just trying to find the original plan that we submitted back in, back in July.
Is the new plan the same, but with the larger trees and just not the intermittent shrubs between the trees?
Yeah, that's correct. I can, I can pull that one up easily.
All right, why don't we start there?
Okay. Let me share my screen here. All right, so you can.
Can you enlarge that a little bit for us?
Yeah. All these bars here. So in the, in the old plan along Van Buren Avenue, this hillside was landscaped with many smaller shrubs in between the larger trees that we've planted here. And if you look at the parking islands as well, there were many smaller shrubs and mulched areas as well as this, this back border between the property with the upper apartment buildings. And we replaced a lot of that smaller shrubbery with new larger trees along here. There was, there was no plantings here, and we felt that that would create a better buffer between the properties. Up on the upper level, adjacent to Prospect Street, there were no large trees here in the original plan at all. So we added these larger trees, which weren't part of the plan. All of these trees were here. There used to be a couple of trees at the entrance to the driveway here, however, to get the mowers in and out of them in the tight. With the tight turning radius, it was difficult, so we moved those as well. And we staggered some larger trees in here as well. At the front of the place gate, which is down here in the circle, there was another mulch planting bed here. And then down here, which is basically where, this is essentially where the current main entrance to the building is now. Through here, there's a, there was a planting bed again with mulch, which has been replaced with one large spruce tree.
Are most of the trees spruce trees or are some of them flowering trees since it's spring?
It's a good, it's a good mix of spruce trees and deciduous maple trees.
That sounds like it'd be quite nice.
Commissioners, have any other questions about this change? All right, if not, thank you. Steve, do we simply need to act on this and either approve it or deny it?
Um, we have a resolution. I can pull up this need. Frank, if you could just pull off your share for a second. I can pull that up. Okay, can you see that?
Yes.
Okay. I can blow it up if you need it.
I'm not going to be the first one to say I want it blown up.
You could have not seen it.
One second.
So I'm good.
How's that?
No, that's better. Thank you.
All right.
And Steve, even though this is a municipal project, I assume the same regulation holds that should any of these plantings die, they'll need to be replaced?
Correct. And if you wanted to, yeah, I wish I had the original conditions, but if, if you'd like to add that as a number three, then we could do that too.
Is there any objection to our doing that from the other commissioners? All right, I see a lot of people not saying no. Then let's, let's add that as the third requirement.
I don't know what the right term is. I'm putting parishion. If somebody doesn't like that, we can change that.
That's really dramatic. That's good.
Next planting season. So the next.
Perfect.
That's.
That work or we want to make it simpler? However you want to do it.
No.
It works for me.
Okay.
Looks good.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve?
So Frank.
Frank moved. Is there, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, Galen, seconds. Let me note before we vote on this that both Commissioner Witherspoon and Commissioner Goldstein have also joined the meeting. Why don't we do this by a show of hands? All those in favor of the motion?
I'm gonna have to think because I just got here.
Okay, so we have everyone in favor with Commissioner Goldstein abstaining. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second item is Dr. Sayed Reza, request for release of bond for conversion of existing thirty-eight thousand square foot building to mixed general and medical office. Report and recommend action. This project goes back quite a ways. Is there someone here representing Dr. Reza?
I'm assuming no.
All right. Steve, you want to just give us a quick overview?
Yeah, you know, staff has, you know, reviewed the request and, you know, the, all the, all the conditions of the initial approval. But Meta, as the chairman mentioned, this was project was approved a while ago. So I think perhaps this was just a housekeeping item on their side to get the bond information cleared up. I put up, put up the resolution that staff put together. It's a pretty benign, straightforward resolution.
Do we, do we typically send someone out to do an inspection before acting on the, these types of matters?
Right. And typically the, the types of items that are held over, sometimes they're maintenance bonds to make sure, you know, like the drainage improvements will hold after a set amount of time after the development's done. Or sometimes they're related to erosion controls, which are usually obviously when the project's built that those aren't necessary. Or sometimes they're to make sure the plantings are in place, so we'll go out and as part of a lot of times it's a C O inspection, we'll look at those items.
Right. For those of you who may not be familiar with the site, this is the old hour building. Was converted by Dr. Riza into medical and mixed use. I believe there is still an immediate medical care facility located there. Can I have a motion to approve, release the bond?
Oh, both the motion.
Okay, Richard moves it. Is there a second? And Frank seconds. All those in favor?
Hi.
Okay.
Hi.
Any opposed?
Hi.
Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes.
I wonder if the soccer club is still there. Remember that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
The, I'm sorry, I didn't note the number of that, that request. It was zero one dash ten S P R. And the, under review and action of pending applications, the final one is oh two dash oh six S P. Beth Israel Society forty King Street. Also a request for release of bond for an accessory use structure for existing place of worship. My understanding is that was a project that never went forward. Was, I believe it was to be a mikva, and the synagogue simply didn't go forward with it. Is there anyone here representing the Beth Israel Society? It appears there is not. I don't see any reason whatsoever not to approve this, considering that the project never went forward. So is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Okay, Rod approves. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Michael seconds. Oh, Steve, you want to get us all together so I can see all the raised hands? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, review and action on new application. Twenty twenty-one dash thirteen Cam, Sixth Taxing District, Two Wilson Avenue, reconfiguration and expansion of existing public parking lot. This is a preliminary review prior to our setting a public hearing. Is there someone representing the sixth district?
All right, yes, Chairman Showman, Adam Blank of Woffsy Rosen for the Sixth Taxing District. As Chairman Showman mentioned, this is a CAM application. It does require a special permit. So this is just your first look. I'll try to give you a brief overview of the project. Andy Similides from Land Tech and Kurt Lowenstein of Land Tech may also be on the call, as is Mike Barbis, who can hit anything that I miss or answer questions that may come up. But we'll try to keep it brief this evening, so that the, if I can share my screen. Okay, you guys can see that, right?
Uh, here it is, yeah.
Okay, great. So the Sixth Taxing District owns Two Wilson Avenue in Rowayton, which is highlighted here. The, the property is fairly large. Much of it is undeveloped, and a portion of it has wetlands. The developed portion up top is a municipal parking lot. It's a free public parking lot. A little portion of it is actually owned by the neighboring property one forty Rowayt Nav. And so this application is technically on behalf of them as well. You have authorizations for us for one forty Rowayt Nav. So this, this is an existing lot of forty-three spaces that we'd like to increase to make it sixty-one spaces. In doing that, we'd like to make some internal improvements, we think, to the traffic flow. And essentially, in order to make it larger, it's being pushed out in this direction. The, the property is in the Rowayt and Village District. Actually, it's split zoned. B Residence and Rowayt and Village District, but the lot itself is all in the Rowayt and Village District. And the only reason this is really in front of you is because of the Five Mile River here, which triggered the CAM review. And the parking lot is, if I zoom out a little bit, the lot really services this, the, the local businesses, restaurants and retail here along Rowayt Avenue. And we think that it also serves essentially as a buffer to keep cars from going into any of the residential streets and trying to find spots there. Any of you that travel in Rowayt, and particularly in the summertime, know that up and down Rowayt and Avenue, parking gets tight. So we were in front of the Conservation Commission. As I said, there are wetlands on the property, and the, some of the work being performed is, none of it is in the wetlands itself, but is in the wetland review area. We had a number of meetings in front of them, and they have provided a wetland permit. So we have, we have their approval in hand. The, essentially, you can, it's hard to see, but this is the old edge of the lot. So that the biggest change is that it's being pushed back, pushed out west, I guess. And you'll see the added row of spaces here have a different kind of square look to them. Those are going to be pervious pavers. I don't know that Land Tech and the client have settled on the exact product that will be used, but they will be a pervious paver. In, in addition, and that will help, of course, with drainage. There will be an additional, for drainage, there'll be an additional catch basin here. This is a deep some catch basin with a ultra urban insert and smart sponge. So basically an oil separator that will allow water to travel through there into a new rain garden before dissipating towards the wetlands. There'll also be new, new inserts put into the, this catch basin here and another catch basin that's up top that's pre-existing. These improvements, there's a stormwater report that you've got that, that shows that these improvements will actually improve the water quality and are compliant with Norwalks regulations. There is site lighting that exists on the site currently. No new lighting is proposed, although the existing lighting will be moved. The existing traffic flow currently, if I go back, see the traffic flow currently, this is entrance only off of Wilson, and traffic circulates through here, then back here, and then when you want to get out, you're supposed to come back through here and then up to Rowayt and Avenue. It's been my experience, and between now and the public hearing, I'd encourage you to take a look, that anybody that parks over here, they don't do that whole rigmarole. They come out right here. They go the wrong way out and either turn right and come up, or they go right on Wilson. Under the revised plan, there'll be a dedicated exit here and entrance here. There, you have a traffic report that shows no adverse impact, and that traffic report assumes that these spaces will all be filled up. I mean, it's kind of an odd thing, because normally, you know, like a parking lot doesn't generate traffic. It's the uses around it that generate the traffic, but we've assumed that it generates traffic. And, and you have that report showing levels of service stay at A or B, and that there's not going to be. I mean, this is a little unusual, and that cars come in, they cycle through, and they come out. It's theoretically possible that if they went all the way through and didn't see a spot, they'd come back out to Wilson and then come back and enter again. We think that that's going to be fairly rare. The traffic consultants do as well. And the cities reviewed it as well, and they, there were some comments sent back through the C I C review, but, but none of them saying that this is a, not a workable solution for the traffic flow. And we think it'll be much safer, actually, with, with this type of a pattern. The landscaping on the site, there's obviously by pushing the, the lot out, some trees that are in existence now are going to need to come down. And by adding this exit here, some trees come down. But we've proposed a fairly hefty landscaping plan predominantly in this wetland buffer area. The original plan actually called for a fair amount more tree, bigger trees in here. But in talking with the wetland staff, it was determined that we, we lowered the number of bigger trees going in and put a stronger understory, that that would create a more comprehensive landscaping plan and would allow the, the bigger trees to sort of age and not crowd each other out and kill each other off and have a, have a dense understory. So there's a whole bunch of different species that are proposed for planting in, in here. That's really the bulk of the landscaping. The, we've got sign-offs from FIRE and W P C A. We did get, as I mentioned, some comments from D P W that, that were, I think, fairly minor. And Land Tech is working through now that will, we expect we won't have any issue with. We're waiting on a couple of other sign-offs, but again, we haven't, nothing's come back that screams that there's an issue with the project from any of the departments. And, and again, you're, we're really only here because of the proximity to the Five Mile River. There are no adverse impacts to the, to coastal resources or to the Five Mile River from this development. It will alleviate some strain on the surrounding streets, and, and obviously it's, it's being done by the taxing district, which of course is not a, doing this for profit. It's being done by the taxing district to really support the local businesses on Rowayt and Avenue that need the parking. So that's my hopefully five minute or so overview.
A couple, couple of questions. As I recall, to the, on the picture you showed us, to the right in that wetland area, there's a sign, I believe, that says Ambler Park. And I'm wondering if that is actually a designated parkland.
I can answer that question. That sign is there for only one reason. All of this property was owned by a family called the Amblers that had settled it, I believe, in the early seventeen hundreds. They eventually left this area and went to Milton. And they own that whole shopping center and where this parking lot is. And one forty Rowayt and Avenue LLC and us split the purchase. And all the, the whole family, everyone had died out. The last two people were their mother and a daughter. They both died, and these lawyers were in charge of the estate. And we were required to put that sign up to, I guess, commemorate the family, or I, I don't know. It was part of the deal. I wasn't yet a commissioner, but I was involved in some of it. But that's why that sign is there. So it's not an official park. Much of, of those wetlands there that you see, it's actually a vernal pond. So you can't really even walk through there. A lot of trees are down. So it's, it's pretty, it's pretty hard to get through. So it's not a traditional park, I guess, is the long-winded answer to your question.
I mean, I, I certainly understand the need for the parking there. And the existing lot is very tight as it is. I think having that additional exit onto Wilson will be somewhat helpful. It's very difficult now if you try to go out through the entrance. I know I looked at the possibility of doing that last time I was there, and I didn't want to do it with my car.
I can understand that. And the other thing too, which Adam, maybe you could show on that map, is, you know, there were all those storefronts that were, that were empty for twenty years, and they have a new owner now. This is along Rowayt and Avenue on the riverside there, where it used to be the Soy Bell Pharmacy and other businesses. And there's like ten thousand square feet of, of retail. And that space, you know, that, that, they have a new owner, and they, they have tenants in there now. So post, post COVID and everything, parking is, parking is a problem now, and it will become a bigger problem.
I noted that the staff had some questions, and Steve, I was wondering if those questions have been addressed.
I honestly don't know the answer to that question, because Brian Baker was handling the application specific. So I don't know if, what communications he's had with Attorney Blank specifically on that part.
Okay, I, I assume we'll, we'll get answers to those questions prior to the public hearing.
Yes. I think, I mean, if you, if you want to wait till the public hearing, we can, we can deal with it then. I can try to pull up the, the staff memo if you want.
Staff seemed to have a concern over lighting. I don't know if you can shed some light on that. I'll see myself, but.
So, so there was, they, they had asked, which is, I think, fairly typical, a lighting plan or photometric plan. I know Land Tech is, is putting that together now. It's not complete, but will be prior to the public hearing. It's not complete, but will be prior to the public hearing. I don't think that your staff knew at the time and then they may still want it, but that that we weren't in fact putting in new lighting. I mean, we are moving it so that the light will be dissipated differently, but but we're not putting in new lighting. So we don't, I, again, I don't, I don't see it as ultimately going to be an issue, but but we are getting a plan done.
All right, Steve, when could we schedule this?
Let me check with Brian to see what referrals are still outstanding, if any. I don't know. I think that would be the only thing that would hold it up from being on your next meeting. But let me check with Brian. I think he's got it mapped out.
Okay. So we will try to schedule it for our, one of our main meetings. So long as we we have the rest of the information that the staff needs and that you're currently putting together.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. Moving on, 2021-14 SPR WDG Norwalk LLC 480 Westport Avenue Intensification of Existing Restaurant Use Preliminary Review. And I believe this is going to be a fairly short introduction to Popeyes.
Yes.
Someone here representing Popeyes?
Yes. Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can. Can you identify yourself, please?
I will, yes. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut with Solely Engineering. Office is located at 501 Main Street in Monroe, Connecticut. So we're here, going to give a very brief presentation just to kind of familiarize the commission with what we're proposing. I'm going to share my screen. So we're proposing to essentially re-tenant the existing, the existing building at 480 Westport Avenue. So this is right along Westport Avenue, just to, you know, it's a little bit east of the intersection with Willard Road. CBS sits on the corner there. And then to the to the east, excuse me, is Lewis Street where McDonald's sits and just to kind of, so this is the former Burger King restaurant. Most recently, it's been an Indian restaurant. We are looking to essentially re-tenant the building and do some facade renovations to accommodate a proposed Popeyes drive-through. We did, we did provide some, we have since, you know, we submitted the application. We're here this evening. We did get some comments back from WPCA and DPW. We've actually submitted a response to those comments, which is currently under review. And obviously, we understand that one of the primary concerns regarding our proposed activity to bring in a Popeyes restaurant is really surrounding the traffic concerns. We're very familiar with some of the drive-through issues that the that the city's been experiencing, you know, based, you know, through COVID, we'll kind of call it the Chick-fil-A effect. But we did prepare a traffic impact statement, which has been submitted to the town and distributed to the transportation, mobility and parking department. So that is under review. One of the things that we looked at with that traffic study, we did actually look at the existing Popeyes restaurant on Route One to really understand how that restaurant is operating today during these times. We determined exactly what their queue is for their peak period. You know, that that lunchtime peak period, and we actually observed a total queue at that location of about five or six vehicles at its peak time. Just to point out for this site, we actually have enough storage on our property to accommodate 19 vehicles in that queue in that drive-through. So we, we're definitely, thankfully, the site can accommodate the proposed use. You know, we certainly understand the, you know, the potential concern about traffic implications and impacts to to the roadway network. So we just prepared that report and it's been submitted and it's under review. So, you know, that was a very brief overview. Again, it's, it's really just re-tenanting the existing building, some facade renovations. We'll be replacing a grease trap and we have provided everything to to the commission and the staff for their review. We understand that we need more time for that to get reviewed in more detail. So we're, we're looking forward to the, to the next meeting when we can actually kind of have a little bit more in-depth discussion. But we're happy to answer any questions that the commission may have at this time. So we can maybe be be better prepared for the next meeting as well.
How do you determine peak period? I mean, I understand it may be, it may be lunchtime, but are there daily differences or are weekends different from the rest of the week?
So there's a lot of different factors that kind of come into play with that. A lot of it's based on location and things like that, exactly where it is in a community and what the daytime population is, things like that. Generally, we use the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which does, you know, establishes trip generation rates that are utilized for traffic impact studies. It's widely accepted by municipalities and the Department of Transportation. For this particular use, for for this kind of drive-through, it's generally actually Saturday during lunchtime. So we actually went out and observed that other Popeyes to understand how that's operating during that peak period. So it does somewhat vary from site to site, but we're confident that 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 Saturday, you know, the Saturday numbers that we analyze were likely consistent. And again, the the queues are a lot of times the queues are very restaurant user specific. So some of the the issues that you may be realizing at other users isn't necessarily the same for a Popeyes or a different type of restaurant user.
And I think, I think we understand that. I, I think with Chick-fil-A, we have a very unique situation that's unique, unique to them. Steve, same question in terms of scheduling?
Yeah, I, I think we'll, Brian and I will coordinate with the applicant on getting them fitting into one of the main meetings.
Okay. Sounds good.
You know, it's assuming pending, we're not missing any information. So that would be my only caveat.
All right. Any, any further questions for Mr. Solely?
I have a question. Having to do with what you referred to as the Chick-fil-A effect and and Chairman Schulman's remarks, but why would you anticipate a queue of five vehicles and didn't Chick-fil-A say they have 128 or something?
Well, what we actually did is we went out and and studied the existing Popeyes, which is actually right down the road from from Chick-fil-A. So we wanted to observe how that restaurant is actually operating and what the the queues are there. What we observed was a max queue of of six cars in the drive-through during that Saturday lunchtime period. This site actually has enough queue for 19 vehicles. So we have a lot more capacity at this location with this building. And we feel that will, you know, it'll adequately be able to serve the the restaurant without having any impacts to to Route One. And and I agree with you. I think, I think Chick-fil-A is unique in that they're experiencing the, you know, pretty much all their stores across, definitely across the region, but they're kind of experiencing a different, really a different phenomenon than a lot of other users. We do a lot of, a lot of work for a lot of different restaurant operators, a lot of different drive-throughs. And, you know, while COVID has certainly seen an uptick in a lot of them, the the biggest, the the one that's affected, being affected more than anything is Chick-fil-A. And I think you guys are probably experiencing that more than anybody in the city of Norwalk. But but from a, from a Popeyes standpoint, you know, again, we have, we have enough capacity here for 19 cars in queue to wrap all the way around. You know, we have a deeper lot to kind of come through here. But we also wanted to also establish and demonstrate kind of how the other Popeyes in 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 the city is actually operating to to kind of give some more, you know, support that that we feel our site is adequate and won't have any adverse impact.
Would it be useful to look at the other drive-through restaurants on Westport Avenue? How much they're generating the McDonald's? Et cetera, you know, that would give you an idea of how many people are eating lunch on Saturday on Westport Avenue?
We certainly could. Yeah, we could, we could certainly look at at some of the other restaurants on Westport Avenue. Again, a lot of it's user specific. You know, I'm, I wouldn't want to say that that a Mc, that the the drive-through queues at a McDonald's would necessarily be applicable to a Popeyes, the same way that, you know, Starbucks may not be the same as a Dunkin' Donuts, depending on where it's located. But, you know, again, I think we have, with this particular site, we have quite a bit of storage, but if that's something else the commission, you know, is interested in seeing, I'm sure we could, I'm sure we could look at that as well. And obviously, the, you know, Mike, Mike is, is, is really familiar. So I'm sure, you know, once he has a chance to really dive into our report, we'll be working with him to address any of his comments as well.
You know, we're not looking necessarily to just make more work for you. But it does occur to me, based on what Galen is saying, for example, that maybe there's a possibility that Chick-fil-A and and I, I don't mean this in the, in in a nasty way at all, but that Chick-fil-A is actually stealing customers from Popeyes. And if it were not there, that Popeye might very well have a larger queue. So I think it's probably worth looking at a couple of other Popeyes, maybe if there are others along the Post Road in either southwestern Connecticut or or in maybe in the Bridgeport region to see what their numbers look like in terms of queues. Just to make sure that the numbers aren't being skewed by by what's happening with Chick-fil-A.
That's what I was wondering as well.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, I think with that information, we, we, we'd feel much more comfortable when this, when this comes before us for public hearing.
Okay, perfect. We can, I think we can address those concerns.
Okay, good. Anything else before we, Mr. Solely go? If not, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Looking forward to the next meeting.
All right. All of the rest of the agenda are our own, our own reports and materials. Why don't we start with those that are listed, beginning with the industrial zone study, the status report? We have an upcoming meeting on that.
Yeah, I, one thing I wanted to mention that I, I, and I don't recall hearing this during any of the Chick-fil-A meetings was that, and I, and I found this out recently, they actually have the indoor dining closed and then had it closed. So there's, they were doing strictly drive-through, which I think, I, I reached out to Attorney Sutcliffe this week to ask her about that. Maybe I, they think they're going to start opening that up, but I think that exacerbated the situation because you had more, had some people been eating inside, you probably would have had less cars in the queue. So I think that's something to think about, right? You know, to me, that's a kind of a little bit contrary to their site plan approval had they, you know, that, you know, that when they present the application, they're, they're presenting it as a, as a, you know, partially a sit-down establishment. I understand COVID is definitely unique and it's hard to force people to sit down and eat in there, but I think that definitely added to some of the issues.
Right. It's the same true with Popeyes? They also have a sit-down?
I don't know. I'd have to go and look at their floor plan. I've never been, so I can't say.
Well, wouldn't the Popeyes be the only chicken alternative in that neighborhood?
Yes, it would.
No, there's a, there's a KFC right down the road from where they were going.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's still there, Frank. I'm sorry.
I only know because I actually live, live, live around the area, otherwise I wouldn't know it.
To be clear, to KFC Taco Bell.
So to the original, original point, the industrial zone study, I did send out a meeting notice. So there is a
Right.
a public presentation on April 29th, which is a week from tomorrow. So if anybody can attend, that would be great. They, it's consultant's going to run through their, you know, presentation, which is pretty comprehensive on here's what we've learned, here's what we're thinking and recommending, and what do you think? And then they're going to go into some breakout rooms to have some further discussions with the public. And from that point on, they'll, you know, get the input back and then, you know, reconvene with the committee and discuss next steps and then final recommendations on on where to go with the, with the plan.
Steve, I don't, still don't think I have that notice.
I'm going to send it out again. I'll send it out either Friday or Monday.
Okay, because it'll go automatically on my calendar and I intend to go to it, but it.
I would, I'd like to encourage everyone to try and make that meeting. Remember that when the recommendations come out, it's going to be our responsibility to act on those recommendations. And so the more information we have before we need to act, the better. And this will be a good opportunity to get some of that feedback. Okay, South Norwalk TOD Study Status Report.
I don't have anything new. There hasn't been much action on it in the last few weeks. So when I hear something, I'll report back.
Okay, fair enough. And the zoning regulations rewrite?
Nothing really new there at the moment. The, the consultants, it, we're just dumping data on them at the moment and, you know, all the documents and regulations and everything, they're going to need to learn more about the city, including all like our GIS data. We are looking at a couple of dates and I'm, I'll have those finalized pretty shortly, probably towards the end of July will be the initial public kickoff meeting where they're kind of, here's what we're thinking, here's what's going on. And then towards the middle slash end of September will be the larger public planning event where they'll really kind of zone in on, excuse me, on Zoom or whatever, another pun, bad pun. They'll really hone in on kind of things where, you know, what what the public's thinking, where they want to go and and, you know, go from there. So obviously, it's an 18-month process, start to finish. So, you know, we're just kind of at the very beginning stages of things.
Steve, are there contractual benchmarks for when we start to get to see actual writing?
You know? Yeah, I don't ask me what those are. Yeah, there's, there's a, there's a timeline in the project where they're, you know, they and and for them, they want to try to meet those two because they don't want to be doing this forever. So hopefully, and part of that depends, you know, like my staff has been giving them all the, you know, they gave us a whole list of things that they wanted in terms of, you know, all the variances we've issued, all the different plans, all the guidelines, everything. So we've been dumping that in over the last two weeks and trying to get them up to speed.
Steve, is a meeting in late July, good timing? Especially with, with this being at least the beginning of the end of COVID. I'm wondering if you're not going to have difficulty getting a truly representative group because a lot of people are going to be trying to get out of town.
I'll, what I can do too, I can send out again the the scope of work if, so everybody's kind of up to speed on that, but the the initial presentation is more presentation than it is information gathering back. The September, September event will be definitely the one where you'll want the big attendance for. And that one, they're hopeful they can do in person, that that's kind of would, it, 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 it functions better on their end, they think, in person. We did talk about the July date. Initially, they wanted to do the second one in August. I said, I don't think that would work. But there's, you know, the, based on when we started, there's just not, you know, we're never going to find a date that's perfect. And if we have them wait two months, that's just two months of waiting to get the, the project really going. Unfortunately, there's not like, there's not, it's not good for them to wait two months. It's kind of a stop and start and start again process if we went that way.
Okay. And not on the agenda is the meeting on the housing bills that I asked the mayor to set up. The mayor did set up a meeting. It was held last week. I thought that Galen and Michael were going to be there, but it turned out they were left off the invitation list. And Steve and I were the only And uh, Steve and I were the only uh, folks there representing uh, the zoning commission. I had originally asked that we have a meeting with the entire zoning commission. Uh, but apparently, had we done that, it would have had to be a, a noticed meeting with uh, the public uh, i- i- invited. And um, uh, the mayor's office wasn't anxious for that to happen where we were um, discussing um, legis- legislation, um, especially legislation um, uh, that, um, some of which was uh, pretty controversial. Um, where things, uh, the, the, the people who were at the meeting is there was a representative from Senator Duff's office. There were several city staff people. Uh, the mayor was in attendance for most of uh, the meeting. And uh, the executive director of um, uh, the West Cog uh, was also there. He went over um, the uh, two bills um, that um, seem, seemed to be uh, uh, the ones that um, are um, if not moving forward, um, a- at least um, are, are under some, some consideration. And I thought I'd ask Steve to go over them. One of them appears from, from what we were told um, to be very dangerous. Uh, and the other one seems uh, to have uh, addressed a number of uh, issues that I don't believe uh, either the zoning commission or, or the city of Norwalk would have a serious problem with. Uh, but there are a couple of things in that legislation that probably could, uh, could be improved. Uh, Steve, you wanna, you wanna start with 1661, which is um, the most difficult one?
Yeah, that, that one's kind of, um, and I'm not, I don't, I don't think I'm gonna be able to do it justice um, in, in trying to explain some of the, the issues with it. Uh, there, there's some problematic things in there. It's, it's kind of, I, I'd say it's definitely far more reaching than any of the other bills in terms of its, its departure from normal practice and normal standards on, on the way municipalities operate. A couple of the concerns specifically related to that are, there, there's a requirement right now that, in the general statutes, that every five years municipalities have to pre- prepare an affordable housing plan. The next one of those is due in the fall of 2022. This new bill had language that would almost require an additional housing plan to be done. And it was ve- much more specific and much more broad-reaching. And if the municipality um, didn't provide that plan or there were, uh, you know, the plan was determined to be out of compliance, then you would be subject to all kinds of um, oversight and, and potential issues with the state where they could, they could kind of take over things, which I thought was kind of, kind of a little bit of scary language that was put in. Um, the other.
As I recall, authorization on any legal matters, we're going to be decided by the state court in Hartford. Um, not, not in local courts.
Right, yeah. So that, that, that's also an issue because, you know, that not every, uh, you know, court jurisdiction is as familiar with the, you know, the regions in which, you know, that we're operating versus other areas. And that, that was a concern. And it, it just had a lot of.
Do you mean the Superior Court? Is it the Superior Court but in Hartford instead of the Superior Court in Stanford, which is our jurisdiction?
I don't know if, I don't recall if it was Superior Court or not. I, I, that's what we typically do with, with land use cases. We typically go to Superior Court locally or the tribe.
I, I don't understand.
Yeah, I could, um, I, I don't have a, I have West Cog's kind of um, comments on the bills versus having the language of the bills. That, that, and that one's a little more difficult. I can try to send those out at, at, you know, later date if you wanted to go through those.
You know, Richard knows more about this than I do, probably so does Josh and Michael and everybody else who's. But you know, the, the judges in the Superior Court, they rotate to some extent, don't they?
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, you could end up with like judgments who is in the Superior Court in Stanford and he did foreclosures, you know, a lot of line use stuff. He could end up with the Superior Court in Hartford. You know, it sort of seems to, you'd have to get in the car once post-COVID and drive somewhere. But do you think that makes, do you get the difference, Josh, or Richard? Is it? A big difference?
I thought this is the, if I'm not mistaken, this bill is the fair share housing bill.
That's what I'm thinking too.
Yeah, it's 6611, not 66.
The, the bill that's gotten the most attention is SB 1024. I think.
Right, right.
That's right. Just to clarify, just so I'm clear what we're talking about.
Yeah, th- this one is 6611.
And I don't know, cuz I just don't remember. There was, I, I know the Senate passed a few of the bills out, the planning, the planning committee passed a few of them out of their committee. I know some of the more controversial parts of SB 1024 were taken out. And I'm not sure what happened with this bill. And I'm not sure if this bill even made it out of committee.
I, I, I believe it did. I don't know, um, according to, and we had, and I forgot the gentleman's name from Bob Duff, Bob Duff's office was on the, a call as well. And he indicated there wasn't any immediate action on any of these bills that they thought there was uh, several more months of vetting that was going to occur um, before any of this was realized.
Could it be Dean that was on that call?
No, it wasn't Dean.
It wasn't Dean, okay.
Oh, I know Dean, yeah.
Yeah, I was.
Are, are we gonna try to schedule another meeting with our legislative um, leaders in the area?
Well, where, where it was uh, left is, uh, number one, the executive director of West Cog meets periodically with um, uh, planning and zoning and zoning um, um, chairs. And um, he's, he's going, he's going to invite me uh, to those meetings. And once we've gathered uh, some additional uh, information, um, we think there ought to be a meeting, especially with Bob Duff and Stephanie uh, Thomas uh, to uh, discuss these. And it, there may be a way of setting it up so that we're invited to someone else's meeting. So it's not a commission meeting and every, and, but all the commissioners can participate.
Hey, can I ask a question? Are you saying that the, that the head of West Cog has meetings with the chairman of zoning commissions? And he's never invited you?
I was invited to one meeting about uh, two or three months ago. Was the first, but, but, but so was, so was um, Moushak, Mike Moushak. But that's, but that's right. Um, uh, to the best of my knowledge, um, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong. Uh, the chairman of the zoning commission has not uh, been regularly invited to these meetings.
Yeah, and, and they were kind of, initially when they started to gather the group together, they asked for the names and, and I passed them on. But then, you know, they, they're, they're, they were going with the, the chairmans of the commissions only. And I, I didn't hear anything further about when the meetings were occurring or not occurring.
Probably having them with the, the chairman of the zoning commission of every little town and leaving Stanford in no luck out.
Well, Stanford has not been participating. Uh, and I, I, from the, the way I heard it, it sounded as if that was their own decision. Um, but the one meeting I attended, Greenwich was there, Westport was there, Weston um, was there. Um, uh, I think New Canaan may have been there. But yeah, I mean, we've got to be careful about it. I, on, on the other bill, on, on 10, 1024, we may be able to get some sort of consensus on most, if not all of it. But on the other.
1024 has been watered down.
Right.
Yeah.
Quite a bit from, and the, the, the one other bill that was really troubling is no longer active is, was 804. That one had a lot of really far-reaching, um, I think, bad language in it. 1024, all the, I think the, the, a lot of the language people were really pushing for on the advocacy, advocacy side has been removed, a lot of it. I mean, there's some things that are very minor for us was the impacts of accessory dwelling units, which we already allow. And then there was the package sewer, sewage system, which is less of a concern for us. I think that would be kind of a global issue if people had a problem with it from a sanitarian side, but wouldn't have big, big impacts for the city.
I also thought the, the big thing that they stripped out was um, some of the transit-oriented development.
Yeah.
Stuff about, but that doesn't really affect Norwalk cuz.
Well, some of it would have.
Transit-oriented development.
But it, it would have had impacts up at Merritt 7.
Yes, and, and in Rowayton.
Yes. So certain areas of the city that would have been an issue. And, and kind of, the way we were looking at it, cuz I had my staff kind of map all that out in preparation, was it would have kind of penalized us for doing the right things, almost in certain areas where we're, where we're exceeding what they were asking for. It's, instead of looking at it globally, they were just kind of saying, here's the blanket standard for everybody and, you know, deal with it.
Steve, what do you think about, I think there was also a part of SB 1024 where they were gonna talk about putting out model codes? Just because we're in this discussion now.
Yeah, I didn't like that either.
It was, and what I don't know, and I don't know if you could shed some light on this, is if it was straight form coding or if there were multiple avenues. I didn't actually, I don't know exactly what the legislature is thinking about doing here.
They didn't say specifically on a code, but I, I, it was like, it, the way I read it and interpreted it was there were gonna be almost, here's our recommended universal design standards. And I'm like, okay, so every community is gonna look the same after? Is that what we're reaching for? I mean, I could see them putting together, like, you know, guidelines if communities don't have, have them or have the ability to um, develop those cuz they don't have funding or staffing. But I think there's a better way. They could work through the COGS, through grants or something to have that done. But you don't want every community to look the same. I don't, we don't want Norwalk to look the same within every section of Norwalk. So why, why would you want every municipality to do that?
Is that part still in the bill or is that stripped out?
I think it is.
It's still in there.
Yeah, and, and I don't think having some group of four or five people up in Hartford sitting around a table doing that is, makes a lot of sense.
Right.
I can understand objectives and guidelines.
Yeah.
Hmm. But, and, and I didn't know, and I thought what you said about helping communities that would like to change or update their codes but don't have the funding. You know, if you're, if you're like a smaller town in like Litchfield County, I could understand this being more of value. I don't think this is as much about the cities as much as it is about towns. But I don't know if I'm wrong about that.
Well, it's interesting because a lot of this is, is uh, coming, coming out of New Haven and to a lesser degree out of Hartford. So, I mean, the bottom line is, I would hope uh, that within 30 to 40 days or so, uh, we could uh, get a meeting together. Um, and uh, I, I, I think we, we have to find Norwalk speaking with one voice. We can't have the mayor's uh, office saying one thing, I think, and the commission saying something else. Because if we, if, if, if that's where we end up, then nobody gets listened to. So we have to, we, we need, we need to be saying the same thing. Whether that requires compromise on everybody's part or whether we simply all agree. Um, I, 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 I think in terms of actually getting something done, uh, that is of value to the city of Norwalk and of value to the state, that's the best way to do it.
When you say 30 or 40 days, how long is the session? I mean, how long have we got before they?
This is, this is, this is a long session. Uh, Duff's guy said uh, that um, Duff will be looking at some of this um, in three to four weeks. Um, I guess uh, and, and what's going to the planning, uh, if I'm, if I remember correctly, what's going to the planning committee goes through him first. Um, so uh, I have, uh, I'm, I'm, I'm waiting to hear from West Cog. If I don't hear from West Cog, we'll try and uh, just set the meeting up. I think the mayor's office won't be happy. Um, but I think we ought to try to set this one up. It took almost two months to have the mayor's office do it for us. Um,
Louis, how is, how is our voice gonna be heard? Who, who's gonna listen to it? Is that our, our representatives?
Yeah, that's my, that's my hope, that uh, we do it, we do it through our state senator and state reps.
And we could also put something in our writing.
As a commission?
Yeah.
What's the?
I mean, all of these committees ask for testimony. All these committees ask for testimony. And if we really wanna speak out, we can consider doing, you know, something like an op-ed, you know, as, as a commission or some kind of written thing, I think may, if what Louis is talking about in terms of speaking with one voice, something written down in concrete might move the ball there.
Well, I think you're right. I don't think it should just be a spoken voice. Um, even, even if it, it means that um, uh, we, we, we end up setting, sending uh, letters uh, to our state, state reps.
Yeah, and, 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 and I think if I'm not mistaken, when the planning committee had their hearing on this bill, they, it was like a marathon session. And there were zoning commissioners and zoning, you know, c- commissioned chairs and P, and who spoke on these bills. Now, obviously, they're gonna look different. I think these bills are gonna get amended and changed before passage.
Right.
But I think that, you know, if we're, I, I think either written testimony and/or some, some, a letter or, or, or an op-ed, something where it is out there for everyone to see. You know, it's not something, you know, it has tran- it's transparent, um, and also says what we want it to say.
I actually agree with Josh a lot. I think if we do a formal letter to Bob Duff, A, it's gonna help him understand some of these more sensitive topics that he may not be aware of cuz he's covering, you know, a broad territory. And we know with, with a, uh, some kind of statement from the zoning as a whole that he can share, I think will add a lot of value.
Yeah.
I, I, I agree.
Not just Bob Duff.
Complimentary, complimentary.
Everyone, you're right, everyone, the, the whole quorum, Josh, you know, not, I'm using Duff as an example, but the whole quorum.
Right.
Hey, I, I have a question. The planning commi- commission here in Norwalk, what rule do they have? You said that he had Mike Bouschek there? At, Mike Bouschek was at the meeting that the mayor did?
No, no, not at the m- meeting uh, that the, the mayor held, the meeting uh, that the, the West Cog meeting.
Well, if, how do we interact with the planning commission on this subject? Do we need to get them involved with us to, to consider this or is this something zoning?
Yeah, so, so they would be, if there was a, a, ultimately, if there's a meeting with the, your legislative representatives, the planning commission should be involved as well. And I don't know who else, who melts from the city, would, you know, any other city bodies that were appropriate.
So.
Let me, let me ask a procedural question. Um, I, I think this is like a great idea and all that. Um, but I asked the question of a, of, of another commissioner one time who has expertise in an area that I was wondering about. And I got spanked because it might be a violation of freedom of information. So how do we talk about this?
Wait.
We could.
I, I think Josh laid out the, the plan where if we draft a letter that we all.
I, I know, but in order for, Josh wrote a really good letter last time, so he would get my vote as the uh, author. But how does he get input from, from us? How do I get to talk to Josh and tell him how I feel or talk to Louis? How do I get to talk to Josh and tell him how I feel or talk to Louis or Galen?
Or you'd, you'd have to do it in a form like this to make it, to make it a meeting.
Would have to be a public.
Meeting, yeah.
But I mean, our experience has been. It's not to say it always will be, but our experience has been when we get to this portion of the meeting. Typically, we're the only ones here.
It's nonetheless on YouTube.
Steve, why does it have to be a public hearing? Why can't it be in, 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 in one of our executive sessions? Because the letter will eventually become public. Single voice to lose point. We have a single voice. You know, we get buy off on whoever and whomever. But why couldn't we do it as just an executive session now?
So to, just to make sure we're all using the, the same terms correctly. So you, it's not a, a public hearing, it would be a public meeting. So you're, you're meeting as a, a body of.
I misunderstood you.
This is right now.
Yeah, exactly. So executive session is something you could go into if you had, if you were discussing a legal matter or personnel matter. And that, the, the public doesn't get involved. But if you're conducting normal business of the commission, which. This housing bill, your concerns about the housing bills would be, you'd have to do that in, in public view.
My most humble apology, when you say public hearing, my mind went, apologies for that.
So either Steve or I will be getting back in touch with the, the commission members. With a. Potential date and time for. Uh, another meeting. And I would suggest in the interim. We can keep this on our own agenda. Going, going forward. So that we can discuss it again at our next meeting. If there's any additional information to share. I mean, the way we're supposed to operate. Is everything I know, every other commissioner should know. I'm perfectly comfortable with that.
Steve? Has anyone from your staff? Or is anyone from the, from the, employed by the city written any sort of memorandum or, or any kind of analysis? Of these bills, framing it in the context of like how it would affect Norwalk. You know, are there any documents that we could look at that are public? That could help us? In, if we're, if we're thinking about making a statement, I guess is what I'm saying.
So the most, the, the most time that I spent on things was looking at the. Impacts around the, the transit hubs and those kind of things. So in, in. Like, you know, ten twenty-four and then former bill eight oh four. Those were directly impactful. I haven't done anything on sixty-six eleven. I mean, it's, to me, it's just such a. I'll send you out again, I'll, just so everybody has it, the, the memo that Wes Cog put together on it, cause that's got, if you read it, it's got such far-flung kind of concepts that it's. I, I don't know if a memo would do it justice.
I just didn't know if there happened to be any. Yes, there just hasn't been yet, and that's probably because the bills are still being worked out. You know, anything that we could look at, but the West Cock memo would be great.
Yeah, okay.
And Steve?
If we could just revisit Galen's original question for one minute. I have been out of the courtroom arena for twenty years or more. Uh, but I do remember. That they have a complex litigation court.
Yeah.
Have a special court, I think in Waterbury for child custody issues. And I would have to guess, Josh, um, that. I, i- if one of these bills comes to pass, Hartford is gonna be the jurisdiction that's gonna get heard in. They're not gonna, they're not gonna hear. One of these cases and. I can't even think of a little town with a courthouse, but I'm sure it will.
We go to Litchfield.
Yeah, it's not gonna be in Litchfield spirit, I can guarantee you that. They still have those courts though, right? The special jurisdiction.
They do. I mean, uh, Waterbury still does complex and those, and that's complex of any, you know, there, there are serious. Class actions that are there and. I know usually sometimes very complex medical malpractice cases go there too. I think, um, but. You know, in terms of litigation, I think we're like five steps away from there. You know, where they gotta pass the bill first before someone sues.
No, I agree, but I'm just saying that if, if that does happen, I, I, I would virtually guarantee that the jurisdiction's gonna be in Hartford.
I would, I would think so.
I, I believe so too.
I don't think that's such a big bugaboo, frankly.
No, I'm not saying it is, I, you know.
No, I know you're not.
Especially when a lot of the pre-litigation, I mean, I think that. You know, one of the things that's changed as a result of COVID is that a lot of the pre-trial conferences and meetings and stuff have all been happening virtually. And I don't think that's going away. You know, I, I don't think, I think gone are the days where you go for a twenty-minute conference and you wait four hours for the judge to hear your case. I just, you know, but. That's kind of far from for what we're talking about, but yeah.
Right, let's, um, let's move on. We have a couple of other, uh, things that. Need discussion. First, can I get approval for the. Minutes of the, uh, April eighth meeting?
So moved.
All right, Josh moves, Richard seconds. All those in favor?
Saying, cause I wasn't there.
You should abstain, okay. And Nick, are you?
I'm abstaining as well.
Okay, so otherwise everyone approves. Uh, Steve, I think you wanted to speak on the moratorium. Did you not?
Oh, no, I cannot. Yeah, so just what Chairman is referring to. We, we have the, the continuation of the moratorium on contractor yards and one and two family houses in the I one zone. Um, that'll be on for public hearing next month. I was thinking it would be a good idea to think about including. Uh, self-storage as well as. Distribution centers in that moratorium, but it, that never got noticed properly. It never was referred to the planning commission. So I didn't wanna. You know, cause that to get. Uh, you know, and, and any kind of error or do something incorrectly. So if that's something you wanted to pursue, we could do that separately, but I, I. Can't do it as part of that continuation of the moratorium.
Okay. Could you explain, um, why you thought it made sense to do it?
Um, sure, I mean, the, the distribution center, I mean, I think that maybe that stemmed from what happened with the, the Norton situation. Considering. How frequently, uh, and how much more truck traffic we're gonna see in terms of home deliveries and those kind of things. I, I think we. We might wanna think about that. I know the industrial zone study will probably speak to that. So what the impacts of that are and how we regulate that going forward is something to consider. And to me, self-storage is just. I, I'm, I'm a little concerned. It's just not the best use of property. I mean, it. You could say it, it's good from a, uh, traffic generation point of view in terms of, cause it doesn't really generate a lot of traffic. But I don't look at it as a high-value economic or job generating use for the city. And it's, it's in demand and, you know, industrial land is where it's allowed, so that, that's where my concern comes from.
Okay.
Speaking of Norton Place, have you heard anything since the, since they? Took, uh, withdrew their application?
Uh, nothing, no new proposals, no.
That space would be amazing for some kind of technical college. Or, or a elderly home, uh, living facility. A distribution center like they were looking at, we all agree, obviously, just, I don't know.
Well, of course it was a college. I mean, Catherine Gibbs was there for some time.
That's right, that's right.
For like medical teaching or whatever it may be versus, you know, the Catherine Gibbs, which was a administrative college, but. To your point, have something. That would be impactful without having all that. Horrible traffic.
Right. All right, Steve, uh, any further comments from you?
I'm good.
Uh, how about the other commissioners? Sounds like we can adjourn.
So moved.
Okay, Richard moves, Nick seconds, all those in favor? All right, everyone, stay, stay safe, stay well.
Night, everybody.
Be well, good night.